Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the elementary school cafeteria for meeting of the school board, which followed our audit committee meeting. And we are going to begin with pledge. There's a flag.
The pledge is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full board with Ryan Keller. And we have, so our roll call is complete. And we have "For the Good of the Order." We have a very special event today to acknowledge a massive achievement by the girls' cross-country team. And we'd like them to come forward if possible. I'm not going to give a speech because you guys have probably heard 7,000, but just kudos all the way.
Or danger.
Yeah. All right. Oh, he's going to be so jealous.
Joe, you gotta come up here.
Yeah.
Let's have the full board to come on up. The working is super in front of us. Jess, you got this?
Yeah, I feel like one more. Yeah, there we go. Beautiful.
Yeah, there we go. I can't see Chloe's face. She's going to take a better picture than I do.
I want to take a couple.
Yay, Stacey! Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
And they won. Well, can I say something?
I just liked someone.
Alright, so I'm going to speak on the girls' behalf, but on Coach Sappianda's behalf. He couldn't be here tonight. He's at an actual Section 2 meeting tonight. But these young ladies were Section NISPA, Class D Champions of the state in cross-country. Marion came in. Marion, what was your final standing? Third in the state. I mean, that's not a bad thing. They've also went to compete in the federations and then beyond that. So they've been ongoing. But I think first and foremost, the most amazing part of this is all, yes, they are dedicated athletes. Yes, they are talented athletes. But they're also amazing civic-minded students who kept their grades up, who balance all of this, who have done work. So it's not only the athletics. It's the whole aspect of it all. So hats off. You represented Boreyville amazingly well. And we can't wait until what the spring looks like because we know this is only the precursor for what's to come. So congratulations.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but we're not offended if you don't. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else for "For the Good of the Order"?
I'm going to save it to the end because I don't want to take away.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome.
We now have an opportunity for the public to be heard. We're in a different space, but we have the same opportunity. And there is a podium there. So if anyone present would like to come to the podium, introduce themselves, or not. All right. And now I believe we have our first second student.
Second.
Second student board member report. They are a member.
Yeah, so for the month of November, we had a lot of events at the high school. The blood drive was held on November 17th, hosted by the student government. And volunteers from all grades assisted the American Red Cross Drive. And a total of 22 units of blood were donated by students, faculty, and community members. Then Sunday, November 20th, students from the middle school and high school assisted the Boreyville Dollar for Scholars Annual Craft Fair. Concessions and raffle sales will contribute to the more than $10,000 in scholarships that they award to students graduating from Clayton A. Bowden High School each year. On Tuesday, November 22nd, professionals from across the area volunteered to speak with students about their careers. It was a great, well-attended event as student teachers from both the high school and middle school brought their classes to it. I had a great time speaking with professionals from all over the area, including a chef, an emergency medicine doctor, a graphic designer, and Ms. O'Leary, who was also a part of it. I think there were a lot of great people there. And I think everyone who attended it learned something new and were able to ask questions that they never previously had the chance to. For upcoming, for the holidays, we have a food drive hosted by the Key Club, which is a community service organization at the high school. This will support the Regional Food Bank of Northeastern New York. They're collecting food items in the high school lobby and the grades with the most donations will get to see their teacher representative in the penguin costume the day before break. I think this is a great way for students to work together to support a great cause and have a little fun during the holidays. The freshman class also has a Hilltown Toy Drive. Their box is already overflowing with tons of toys. And it'll be great to see all of their toys donated to children around the area next week. That's it.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you. All right, following that is the superintendent's report.
All right. So first and foremost, I gotta stay on the call first and foremost. There we go. First and foremost, we have our Capital Project vote tomorrow night at the high school area, starting at 2:30. So that is happening. Again, this is where we will be happening in elementary school. These two rooms, actually where we're standing right now, will actually become music rooms. So new ventilation, new sets of stairs. These will actually be a little bit higher. And it would go back further. But these have now become the new music rooms. I would encourage you, again, walk around the building at the end of the night to be able to see some of this. Also, one of the things that I haven't talked about a lot, but I am going to speak about quickly, is the fire alarm system. So in this building, it's going to get a whole brand-new fire alarm system. Along with that, it's a PA system at the same time. So if you've been in this building when they've tried to get a hold of people and use our PA system, it's definitely old and antiquated. So we would be updating those systems at the same time as the fire alarm. We met with DOT today, Jim, myself, and transportation. So we are looking at the traffic studies, making sure that, you know, if we need a light on Martin Road to New Salem, or Martin Road to New Salem Road, that we'll be prepared and navigating for what we need. So we started our traffic studies there. We're also looking, and we've confirmed at this point, to 95%. Correct, Jim, 95%? We're waiting to see if there's a weight limit on Martin Road to make sure that we're working with the town. But at this point in time, we were semi-confirmed that there is no weight limit on Martin Road. So that's another positive impact, making sure that, you know, that road is sustainable in that area. But we are also making sure that when we're doing our transportation studies, that we're looking at our curves when we turn and then working with DOT appropriately. So that's a positive in that regard of when we're working with them. Other than that, we've done a lot of notification of the communities. We've done newsletters. And it's just waiting till tomorrow. We will be sending out, either which way the vote goes, we'll be sending out notification either tomorrow night and/or Monday, or the next morning.
And the vote is in the lobby of the middle school?
Yep. So speaking of that, it will move me on to my next component.
What, it's from 2:00 to 9:00?
2:30, yeah.
2:30?
2:00 to 9:00.
2:00 to 9:00.
2:00 to 9:00.
Okay, tomorrow.
Frank, before we move to middle school vestibule, have there been any concerns that have come out of the transportation study that would indicate that the project is not feasible?
Not at this time. So that's where we're still continuing, but at this point in time, no.
And it would fix a lot of, it would fix some of the parking issues that we're having over here.
Correct.
And take the bus garage away from Fly Creek, where there's a risk, not necessarily happening, there's a risk of contamination.
Yeah. Completely gone. So one thing we noticed as we're going through the project vote is that, and this came up at our district safety committee team, is that we're opening up our middle school at 2:00. So, you know, and we're pretty much locked down during the day. We can't let people in and out while students are in. But at 2:00, we all of a sudden kind of open the floodgates. So tomorrow, we're going to have a lot of security. We've asked all the county sheriffs to actually be there as well. So we will be monitored and students will be kind of quarantined off. And then they'll leave in a different area. So they're not going out through that point. But that does come up with budget vote time, of kind of conversation with the board of, what do we do in May? Do we continue this practice of starting at 2:00? Do we do it later? Do we kind of move it to a different area in the building? We've done some research. Jess and I have looked at a couple of different things. And the law states it must be held six consecutive hours. So two of which must be after 6:00. So that is what the law states. So if we start at 3:00 and go to 9:00, or 2:45 and go to 9:00, you're still in compliance. And it does kind of stop the issues with, you know, having the building open while there's students in the building. Instead of moving it to where the gym is and like enough that area, you're then maybe opening up other areas if you move it because then people always come to that foyer. You're changing that location. People already know how to get in and out very easily. So you could move it. But I think the easiest and most simple thing would be to just change the timeframe for May.
Tyler, did you ever thought about that in terms of students voting? Do you think students would still vote if it happens after school hours? The students that are 18?
Students that are 18? Like if they started at 3:00?
Yeah.
I haven't heard of a lot of people who do vote for the budget vote, who are students. But I would think that if they really wanted to, that if it was open at 3:00, then they would still vote. I know there has been issues with like, I don't know, busing always has to move. And I feel like for students, they're always confused because some of them don't even know that there is a vote. And then they're like, where do I go to get to the bus? So that's an issue.
So it wouldn't be a problem. It would just solve problems.
Yeah, I think so.
We can't make that change now because we've already publicized it and went through those. So that's why we couldn't do any changes. But since it's May, we could make a change easily, still be in compliance. And then just help with that and also help with some safety concerns.
So another imperfect solution would be early dismissal, which I'm sure the kids would love.
Just saying.
We can't change the calendar for this year, but.
No, we can because we haven't actually made the calendar yet or the budget vote.
And letting the school calendar.
Oh, the school calendar.
But an early dismissal drill is what, like 15, 20 minutes early, isn't it?
But we do that in the, yeah. We do already do that in the fall. Could do it again.
Or we could align it with the day of a vote. That's true, in the future.
Are you expecting a huge rush of voters?
Actually, RG, we can't actually align it with the day of the vote. So we can do one, but that drill is actually capital region-wide for the early dismissal. So we do that with BOSEs and other things. So that's a regional-wide early dismissal that's based on the school calendar of all the calendars in the district. So if we could have one, we can add one in. But that one has to be there.
How many people come at 2:00?
Yeah, I don't know that answer.
Do we know?
I see quite a bit. I usually come at 2:00. And I do think it tends to be the elder operation.
Or you could even do 2:30 after the building's already dismissed. Kids are already gone. You could do that as well.
But it has worked in the past.
It has. But you're also, again, you're opening up a building when students are there. You know, I've done it in other districts where, we've done it in locations where you can lock it off. That's why you could do it in the gym for that half an hour and completely move the vote. But you can lock that complete area so you can have it free for many students or free for every area. But that typically, you'd want to be able to contain it away from students.
And if we did it, let's say in the gym, the high school gym?
Yeah, that foyer area.
Everyone's parked, all the kids are parked.
Correct.
They wouldn't have that parking ability.
They'd have to move and go in another direction. So I think the question is going to be is, do you want to explore making a change? Or do you want to just leave it as is? We have time.
As is. I vote as is.
Is this an issue that the district safety committee has discussed?
It's the building safety team at the middle school has brought this up.
And where are their views?
I think they're concerned at the fact that the building is open while students are in. And that if we can do anything to mitigate any concerns with that, that they would look at it.
I think if we moved to 3:00, that would be great if we're still in compliance with the amount of time and... Just because, I mean, then you're right. Everybody's gone. Every kid's gotten on our bus fare.
2:00 is a tradition. The voting tradition has been 2:00. It's not required by law.
Not required. And not required by our policy.
What time do the buses pull up?
2:20.
So 2:30?
2:30 is doable.
Yeah, 2:30 is doable.
Or even 3:00. You're completely.
Yeah.
You have funny places to park.
So we're looking to. So why don't we look into it?
You know what, I think that's a better idea rather than have the building open up if it can be moved.
So I can look into it and really do kind of real deep dive, making sure that, you know, anything we say, what implications that will have, and then give you a recommendation. Okay. All right. So speaking of middle school and secure vestibule, so finally, we've been working on this for almost a year at this point, or even longer, because I know they talked about it in the first Capital Project before. We have finally had state approval for our secure vestibule in the middle school. Yes. And we have finally gone out for bid. Correct, Jim? The bid is out? It was supposed to be out Friday, so I haven't seen it. Well, we're having a meeting on Thursday to make sure everything's clear. But yes, the bid will be out then. Perfect. So we're looking at the second week in January, for a second week in January, having our bids back. So if we get a bid, award the bid, we could be looking at, you know, hopefully at springtime, kind of going through, making sure we can get this up and running. So maybe by the end of the year, I don't want to jinx us, but maybe by the end of the year, depending on how the construction companies work, we could have a new secure vestibule up in the middle school. So.
Could you describe what that looks like?
Yeah, so per a lot of the state recommendations and national recommendations, you want to have a two-factor kind of way for people to get into the building. So they come in first. And then right now, when they go to the middle school, they come in and then they just go anywhere, right? They have to go to the left or they could go to the right, but those doors aren't open. What ends up happening is they buzz in and then they have to get buzzed in again. So that middle entranceway, the middle, they're kind of basically a fishbowl between the two. And they can't go into the building. What will end up happening is there's going to be a window cut into that brick going into the middle school office. It's also going to be bulletproof so you can go down, have all the different safety factors that have to be in it. But that way, parents can come in and say, I gotta drop off lunch. They drop it off, they leave. You know, I gotta drop off an instrument. They drop it off, they leave. I have to pick up so-and-so. The kids get called, the parents are waiting in the vestibule, they leave. So it just basically locks down the complete area. And, you know, in order for them to get back in, the office people have to buzz them in a second time to go through the second door. So really, that really is what you want, is that secure vestibule area. We'll have that here in this building. And we're also working on that in the high school as well. High school's a little bit more. The facilities team's been working on it for a while. We're doing, we found those funds using the Smart Schools money that we had to re-submit again. But using the Smart Schools money, and because that was there like three years ago, the district combined Smart Schools. But the plan really didn't work. So we vamped it, re-changing it, submitted it again. And we're hoping that we can do that for the high school. That main entranceway, the door will actually swing out further. And it will actually include where Mrs. Champion stands. That will end up being the secure vestibule area. So changing that kind of doorway. But then you're locking down all of those areas and really creating an optimal space that you're supposed to. So we're one step forward in getting one of the best views. One out of three is not bad.
The elementary school one is in the Capital Project?
Yeah, elementary school's in the Capital Project. The entranceway is actually in that kitchen. So where the kitchen window is would be the entranceway into the building. And then it's a two-step again right there. And the office is on either side of that.
Frank, are we technically meeting the recommendation now by using camera and having to buzz through the door?
Yeah.
I think we are.
Yeah, right now, we're meeting the recommendation. Could we do more with the secure vestibule? Absolutely. You know, because right now, we're using cameras so we're watching which way the people go. But it's always better to be able to secure it down as best as possible. It's been, we've been talking about this for the past three years. So we're really excited that we got to this point currently. Any other questions on that? All right, last one. So I shared with you before, the USA New York State High School clay target league. So our gun club in Boreyville, we have representatives here who can answer questions. But thank you guys for coming. Our gun club is working with, has already been working with the school district and in an unofficial capacity, having a league where the students go down to Boreyville to shoot clay targets. In order for students to compete, gun clubs are partnering the school districts. Currently, there are, geez, I want to say about 16 school districts, ranging from here all the way down to Cooperstown area. And we're looking at Mahonson, Lantingburg, Bernox Westerloh has this. So there's a lot of school districts that, you know, are neighbors, having these.
We just added it.
Yeah, so Greenville just added it as well, where the school district creates a club. And that club is the gun club. Those students participate in the USA League, in New York State League, where they can compete and be able to shoot. And then you'll be able to have that kind of competitive nature to it and give more opportunities for the kids. There is a resolution on tonight. If the board wants to table it, they can, or they can vote on it. But it's to endorse the club and to have a volunteer coach, pending fingerprint clearance. Because per our policy, if one of our volunteer coaches has to do so, it's considered like the highest level. So they have to go through the fingerprints and all those things. But, you know, I endorse it. I think it's a great opportunity for our students. We have great partnerships with our gun club, who's already been doing it. It's one of, it is the safest sport that is out there. It's extremely regimented. You know, you think about it, there's no muscle issues or anything going on. This, you know, I'm sure there's muscle that goes on your trigger finger. But, you know, it's gun safety. It's, you know, it is a sport. It is an opportunity for students to compete. It is an opportunity for students to explore, you know, their interests. And, you know, it's there for us and for our students. Any questions?
Is there a transportation impact?
No, because it's on Saturdays. So it's on parents. So no transportation impact, no funding impact on us? Really, it's just an endorsement.
My husband's a sniper, so.
So, all right, that's all I had.
They have teams at college level too.
Right, college, yeah.
It's a good grader for concentration and mental clarity.
No, that's it.
Thank you to the gun club.
Yeah.
Do you have anything that, do we?
Yeah, I brought, I asked them everything. They asked a question if we had a question for them.
We've been running the program probably for two years now, two or three years. We got interrupted with COVID. But we've had anywhere from 18 to 24 students. You may get 11 one week and 13 the next and 18 the next. But it's, Frank said, it's very regimented. It's one instructor per student. And they do not annually have an issue before it's time to, well, go gun and shoot at the clay. And the person I mentor is with them the whole time.
And there is a guideline that has to be followed across the board here and everything that goes along with this. So it's, you know, it's very detailed. We're actually using Mahonson's clay target kind of guide here as well. So a lot of, a lot of thought has gone into this program.
It is the only sport that's had zero injuries.
And they, you know, the difference is now in comparison to the way it's been running is that the students will not compete underneath being blackheads. So they'll be Boreyville. They've now been the gun club, now they're Boreyville school.
And what grade levels does it start at? Or we're proposing 8 through 12.
8 through 12?
Yes. The clay leagues allow 6 through 12, but we decided, and the other leagues in this area, or the other teams in this area, are going with grade 8 through 12.
Okay.
You just have less physical issues and mature issues.
Understood. All right. Great, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Item 4.1, we're going to move to the minutes of the regular meeting. Is there a motion for the minutes to be passed?
I'll move the minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. We have payroll and personnel. CSE. Substitute teacher appointments. Let's take all those four together. Are there any questions about 5.1, all the way down through 5.4? Does anyone want to move those?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
To take it on its own, there is a beautiful motion to make a scholarship, a one-time scholarship in memory of Taylor Burt. And does anyone want to have any questions?
Who's Taylor Burt?
It's a student.
Okay, I don't know.
There was a letter to the board that doesn't.
I don't know. Trying to get a better sense of who he was.
Graduated 2017. Yeah.
Not someone that I would know either.
So my only question with this was the family's wishes included Taylor's mother being able to hand over the awards at graduation. Is that something that we can accommodate?
They're going to do it at the award ceremony.
Perfect. Okay, great.
That's why we have, we don't give out any awards at graduation. That's why we have, we don't give out any awards at graduation.
That's what I would do.
So what we do at the award ceremony, and we definitely will have that happen.
So does anyone want to move that?
Do you know the individual who is, whose idea, who offered this, opposed it? Do you know who he is?
The uncle?
Uh, I think he's an uncle, it's in his letter, I don't remember, I think he's definitely.
I said he was an uncle, but it was like a group effort, he was just the collection point for it.
I, I read the letter, but I didn't pick up any of that, so.
I'll move it, I, I think it's beautifully nice.
It's very generous.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you. Please pass along our appreciation. Five point six is the declaration of surplus and of obsolete items. And we have two buses and a Chevy bus, three buses, so does anyone want to move those?
I'll move them.
Surplus. Anyone want to second them?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now five point seven is the club we just discussed, I wanted to do that separately in case there were any questions about that one, or any thoughts, I know the gentleman just left. Are we all good with it?
Yes.
Yes, okay, well, we'll vote on that. I mean, we, we're going to be, have no questions too. Anyone want to move that one?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last item is an out of town trip to see The Lion King.
That's fun. It's pretty cool.
Yeah. And. Anyone want to move that one?
I'll move that.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I think I'm going to be a chaperone.
I was going to say, does anyone want to go on that trip? Music teacher. Yeah, all right, we're going to now go into the old business, six point one, the audit committee. RG, can you take us back in time to six thirty?
Yes, six thirty P M. So we met earlier this evening, thanks Rachel, we went over the minutes from our November seventh meeting, we had a discussion about an issue that was raised during the November seventh meeting by our claims auditor regarding pins or acknowledgements that the district provides to student athletes, and whether that was an appropriate use of public funds. We looked into the issue and confirmed that it, it does comport with the law. We will be bringing on a new claims auditor, we hope, at some point in the future, because our prior claims auditor had resigned, so when we're able to bring that new person on, we will circle back and, and make sure we close the loop on this issue with our new person who takes over and that will. We also had a discussion regarding exemptions for property taxes that can be afforded to low-income seniors and veterans. The district currently has exemptions in place that we agreed on, the board agreed on, I believe it was seven years ago. We were asked by a veteran who pays property taxes to the district to review the current exemption levels. We made no decisions on this, but Jim is going to assist us, thank you Jim, in pulling together the information so that we can do a bit more of a deep dive on the impact to taxpayers in all of the jurisdictions that contribute to the district's tax levy, and determine whether that's something that the board wants to do. We, if we are going to make a change, we need to get that in place by, I believe, the end of February, towards the end of February. And if we change it, we should be able to meet that deadline no problem. And I think that's it, our next meeting will be February sixth. Thank you.
And the next committee, the curriculum committee.
Yeah, a little off here, we had a meeting on November fifteenth where we did a little deeper dive into that presentation you saw at the last meeting about the K through A test results and the region's test results, and we actually, I thought, looked at some really interesting stuff, and we created minutes, but the minutes never made it to here for some reason, and I don't know what happened, and that's, that's on me. So I don't know why they're not here, but we had a couple pie charts that had been included in the information that we looked at, that were to be included in this, these minutes, that showed that we actually held our own pretty well. Across all grade levels, I mean, there were some dips a little bit here and there through the pandemic, but on and across the board, particularly in comparison to other school districts that we like to compare ourselves to, but really from grade to grade, year to year, we did pretty well. And the proficiency did not dip as badly as you might have read about for other districts, where we heard about all this learning loss, did not sense that that was as evident certainly in any, through any testing measurements here in, in Boreyville, which was really good news. So we came away from that feeling pretty good about where we were at, and I'll try to get that into the rest of the board here shortly, and I apologize for not being in here. Our next meeting, by the way, is on December twentieth. I think, are we going to have a December meeting?
Uh, we usually skip every other month.
That's what I was thinking, I added on my calendar to December twentieth, but now I say that, we had a November fifteenth meeting, we probably won't be till January.
Yep.
Rob, would you have facilities?
I would, if you'd like.
I would be thrilled.
Awesome. So. Some of this I think we can skip, because Frank just talked about the vestibule, so just stole some of those facilities under here. A hundred thousand dollar project, working on getting up and running, that is roof access and changing locks, is that?
That's correct.
Along the shore?
Basically.
Talked about the track, we have a warranty for a year of the surface, but, you know, we do need to replace the track kind of as a whole in five-ish years, right, it's sort of towards the end of this youthful life, two thousand one that went in?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's twenty, twenty something years.
They said twenty-five years is the lifetime, so, and this is going to give us at least a good another five years out of it, but we are there.
Yeah, yeah, tennis courts, temperatures, and leaves of all things have prevented us from finishing the resurfacing and drawing the lines, so that'll happen in the spring.
And pickleball.
And pickleball. You gotta advertise that hard, you're, yeah, with blue lines, right, is it blue lines to the pickleball?
Exactly.
One of the other. It'll be neat, I guess people like pickleball.
Love pickleball.
Yeah, footbridge at the elementary school, we've got materials, we're going to make the cuts necessary to, I guess it doesn't drain, so water freezes, gets icy, so we're going to make some cuts, so it can drain into that creek down below. We're doing a review of our roofs to plan for a future hundred thousand dollar project, making some minor repairs around. And we, we have a question about a satellite field, because the gazebo looks like it needs some support. We also talked about bus patrol, we'll be talking about bus patrol one more time, I guess, on the thirteenth, is that right? So before we kind of bring it back here, I guess, subtly January by that point, because no more of these for.
It'll be the February board meeting.
Oh, will it?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, we have facilities meeting like a week.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Either way, we can wait till February.
I thought you just said we'd win week.
No, yeah, no, we'll keep, no, thirteenth, and then, this is the last one of these for December, that's crazy, right, next year.
It's imminent now, right?
And then we had a really fun, awesome, and I hope we, let's, you know, be great for this slot, this conversation in sort of the end of every one of our meetings for a couple of months, I think, maybe a little bit shorter, maybe a little longer, but had a really fun discussion about, you know, what the next capital project could look like, what, like a big brainstorming session of what, what are some things that we'd all like to see, what are some things that we've heard folks would like to see, and, you know, what are some potential things that we could do? I'm not going to go into all of it, you can go watch the video for a pretty, you know, it was kind of rambling out there and a lot of, covered a lot around, so it was neat, but that's always exciting stuff, so, you know, after we get out and vote, and hopefully, you know, the project tomorrow gets approved, and we'll start working on this one, we're already thinking about the next one, the where, how, and how much, et cetera. So that's all I got.
Ask a question?
Sure.
So we have the SECPRA resolution.
Yep.
At seven point one for the.
For the hundred thousand dollar project, yep.
Can, can you give a quick description of what's a type one versus type two?
Yeah, I'm going to have Jim do that.
So type one action means that not much new ground is being disturbed. Basically, there's, it's essentially ten thousand square feet, if it's not over that, then it's a type one action. If it's a type two action, it means you're disturbing more than that amount, and then it's whether or not it's something that's going to have a negative effect or a not negative effect. So for example, the bus garage, we went with a not negative effect after polling with all the different municipalities. So that's basically the two different types with type two having two different variations.
Thanks, Tim.
Is that it?
Yep, thank you.
All right.
And policy, we actually didn't meet in between our board meetings, so tonight on the agenda, we have one policy, twenty-five ten, which is new board member orientation, you did the first read last meeting, this is basically already our practice, but now it's just in policy form. Does anyone have any questions on that before you have to go up tonight?
So I think the only thing we had was in the last enumerated paragraph, we talked about.
Oh, yeah, not changed, is it?
No, we had talked about having that say that, that new board members are encouraged to attend a workshop for new board members, not a specific program, so I think with that change, it's ready to go.
So Jessica, number four, if that could say be invited and encouraged to attend a workshop for new school board meetings, so if you could just delete the nurse, the nurse part, is that okay, is it legally required to?
It's just not, not the legally required training?
It's more on top of the.
So I guess we'll be voting on that, would that change? And we have our policy meeting this Wednesday, we have a whole agenda, so next board meeting, we'll have lots of. Jen? That's always if anyone, if anyone that's not on the policy committee has anything they want us to look at, just let them know. And we had an ad hoc committee meeting of safety and protective factors. And just to quickly go over, that was really an overview of what's going on. With safety and protective factors throughout the district, and to understand it as a board with our fiduciary responsibility, the oversight of the budget being our purview, so are there any things that would be useful to add to, to that concept within the budget that would fit and provide value to the district and be useful to the district? We had discussion in, Frank's gonna, Frank gave us a long list of different factors that are involved, and there's going to be more safety shared, like a safety component to the website.
So a couple of things we're working on at the moment, so communications is developing a safety component underneath facilities, so the facilities through safety, and then we're going to put a bunch of things, safety related, so people understand exactly what's happening, sharing a lot of the information that goes on and pushing it out. We are working on getting a group of individuals varied, so they can come into a hearing and ask the board and answer questions to the board, that was something that the ad hoc committee discussed. I'm also looking at going through everything else and then compiling a, a listing of different recommendations of what can be done, safety wise, that we're currently not doing, and then also kind of going through, you know, the pros and cons of each, and how they would, you know, be part of the program, something that we talked about as well. So all of those things are getting done at the same time, and then we're going to come back to the ad hoc safety committee to have a conversation regarding those.
Just to understand our budget and our values. Any questions there? All right, with that, we can move to new business, we have the SECPRA resolution. Take all these together, if there's any questions about any of them, and then acceptance of the donations, we will gratefully accept the donation to the discretionary fund, the principal discretionary fund. As well, from the Durbin family, very generous, and for the backpack program as well, those are really appreciated.
And your.
Yeah, oh.
Right, I believe that you receive here, so I mean, that's, that's a very dedicated and generous gift to the district.
Yeah. So with that, does anyone want to move items seven point one to two and three?
So moved.
Anyone want to second those?
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that, we can move to item eight point one, the opportunity for the public to be heard, this is the second opportunity in the meeting, does anyone have anything they'd like to speak to? Okay. And now is, I'd like to ask RG, which was saying the opportunity for the public to be heard.
We're all curious.
Well, Kelly mentioned it earlier, the career fair, and there was an amazing turnout, I, I don't know how many different people and organizations showed up, but the middle school gym was jam packed. I had a lot of, I didn't have as many as others come up to my table, and, you know, tax attorney didn't really generate as much interest as, as hair extensions and chin up bars, but, but it was a really, it was a really great event, the students were really engaged, and I hope, you know, now that we're kind of post pandemic, it's the kind of thing that we do maybe even twice a year, and, and bring in different types of careers, you know, I thought it was great.
Can I just mention, so Tim Kelly is our hockey coordinator now, so this is something like, he's actually, the whole goal of this is to do these things, right, is to be able to have these opportunities to kind of look at different patients, have different experiences, so, you know, it was awesome, I just, it was fantastic.
Middle school play was fabulous, it was really, they did sit on the roof and they knocked it apart, it was really well done. The opportunity for that. With that, and wish you all happy holidays and happy winter time that comes upon us. Anything else? All right, dates to remember, there's a very crucial one, tomorrow, between two P M and nine P M in the middle school foyer, right in front of the pack, there's a capital project vote, and there's two propositions out there, so we encourage you to please go and vote. And then we have a board meeting on May ninth. May, January, January ninth, it's, it's midnight, isn't it?
I would just say, if there's anyone here who has not walked out the middle stairwell, and, you know, because if you walk out the middle stairwell, you will totally see what we're talking about when you're looking at, why do we need to replace the stairs? You know, the building is available for anybody you kind of want, and just kind of get a view of what some of the changes are.
And there's the, in the hallway.
In the hallway, there's a hall aspect of it.
Photos and everything, the layout, yeah.
That's it.
All right, thank you, I'd like to, does anyone want to move to a German?
I'll move to a German.
Does anyone want to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.